Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
For joining us tonight, we'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Baranko.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
McCurus.
Here.
With us tonight to give our invocation, a regular who we always appreciate, Tom Rooney. Tom, thanks for being here. I'd ask that you stand for his invocation. Tom's with the Direct Line Prayer Center. And then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you and we praise you for your goodness, mercy, and kindness to us as a city, and as a state, and as a nation. Lord, we thank you and praise you for what you have done for us. And Lord, we ask you now to help us to be good stewards of what you've placed in our hands. Give us strength, but Lord, give us the wisdom that we need in order to be able to carry out the assignments you've given us. Lord, I thank you. I'm reminded of the story of Joseph, Lord, who was sold into slavery, and yet at every opportunity, rather than becoming bitter and angry, he took the opportunity to receive the strength and the wisdom that he needed to carry out the assignments presented to him. I pray, God, for that kind of wisdom for this body, Lord, that you would bless them with the mind of Christ, that you would help them, God, to follow after you. And Lord, we do pray for the continued blessing and prosperity of this city. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Tom, for the invocation. We'll move on to our consent agenda, item four. Any changes to be made there?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 10 is our regular agenda. Look for a motion there.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve our regular agenda. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Move on to our first item, then item 11.
Item 11 is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into a Tomar Park tennis complex naming agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and the Sioux Falls Tennis Association. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Don.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Standing in for tonight, just as a recap from what he presented at the last meeting, we did enter into a conditional gifting agreement with the Sioux Falls Tennis Association, and really, the effort was for them to provide the 12-court complex. And then the city also contributed some dollars to provide the other neighborhood elements that were displaced as part of the overall project. As a reminder, the Great Life Cares Foundation donated $750,000 for the project naming rights. As proposed, it would be named the Great Life Cares Foundation Tennis Complex at Tomar Park. They'll pay for all the costs for the construction and installation of the signage, take care of repair or maintenance of the signage. Signage must be approved by the city. That includes their planning and zoning department. And the naming rights shall be for a term of the useful life of the improvements, and the useful life is estimated to be anywhere from 25 to 30 years. At the May Park Board meeting, they did recommend approval. Here's a sample of what the monument signage looks like as proposed. This is the windscreen that would go on the tennis court fence that provides additional signage for them. These are the three locations where the signage would go, and be glad to take any questions you have.
All right, Don, thanks. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 11 tonight?
Good evening. Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. As I spoke about in the informational earlier today, it seems like we're just selling our parks off to the highest, whoever wants to give them money so we can put up signage. First off, I'm just wondering, you know, I know that they needed this for tournament play. I get that. Somebody explained this to me the other day. Okay. What about all the tennis courts in town we have? Have we ever done a study how much they're being used? I know people that live, I know a guy that lived across the street from one. He said he never saw anybody ever play tennis there. It's a brand-new court. Maybe we need to, since we're building this nice facility, maybe we should just close all the other ones up and use it for, do some others, put some playgrounds in, some other stuff. I just don't know why we have so many tennis courts. I never realized it was such a popular sport in Sioux Falls. But anyway, back to the naming rights. I, you know, I get it. People want to give money to the city to help the parks. That's wonderful. It's a tax write-off for them. That's awesome. That should just go into the Parks General Fund, and the Parks Department, and the taxpayers can decide what they're going to do with the money. Now, they're saying, well, we'll give them money, but we want to put up a big sign in a public park. So we're going to have a big sign at Tomar Park that says "Great Life" on it, and we have one over at Spellerburg that says, yeah, Spellerburg, that says "Midco" on it. You know, people are going to start wondering if, who owns our parks? Are they our parks, or are they somebody else's parks? And then how they get to decide how to do this stuff. Now, I know that the Tennis Association raised their lion's share of the money to build this facility, but it is on public property, which is owned by the taxpayers, and we did give money to it. And I just have a real issue with having corporate signs in our parks now. Is that what we're turning into in Sioux Falls? We got to go out begging corporations to fund our parks? Are we, are we that hurting for money? I think there needs to be something, I mean, the gifting thing has to be rearranged somehow. I'm just getting tired of driving around to different parks and seeing corporate signs everywhere, because that's what we're going to do, is selling stuff out. Kind of reminds me of how we clean, storm clean up. We call the churches and say, oh, can you come out and cut some logs for us? Bring your trucks? I've said this to you guys a million times. Governments, local governments, pretty damn easy. You collect taxes from the taxpayers, and you provide services to us. One of those services is the parks. I don't, I get the event center. That's a whole different ball of wax. It's an entertainment facility. You're going to want to sell naming rights. But in our parks? I don't, I don't know, I mean, don't we have enough signs in this town telling us what to, what to eat, where to go, what to do? But now, we're, we're just, we're going around and asking people for private donations, and, oh, we'll put up a sign for you. Seems weird to me. I've lived here for 30 years, and, and this, this movement from, it started at the event center, which was fine, and now, all of a sudden, it's, it's, we're selling off our parks. The one thing that makes me laugh is Yankton Trail. That park has always been baffling to me. The city spends gobs of money on that place. And I know that the Soccer Association pays fees to use the facilities. Brand-new parking lots all put out there. Didn't know that they were bad. I mean, I didn't think they were that bad. They probably needed new lines painted, but all new parking lots. And you cannot, did you know you cannot use those parks for anything unless you are playing in a sanctioned game? You can't practice out there, can't run your dog out there. Another example of how we sold out a park, a beautiful park, and Jazz Bass will never come back, let's admit it. And if it does, it'll be dead to Levitt or something, something like that. But I just don't know how we're, why we're utilizing our parks this way sometimes. Highest bidder, I guess.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? All right, council, you have any questions for Don on this item? Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Second call.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by, was that, Sarah, did you have that one first?
You can give it to her.
Seconded by Councilor Cole. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 12 is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, conveying certain real property by quitclaim deed to the State of South Dakota pursuant to SDCL 655 and 912-5. Sponsor is the mayor.
Ryan, good evening.
Good evening, Ryan Johnson, City of Sioux Falls Public Works. The intent of this item is to correct an error that was made in a previous agreement between the South Dakota DOT and the City of Sioux Falls. That past agreement was intended to only convey the area shown on 60th Street in blue. The actual legal description included the area in orange as well. So the intent of this item is to convey that area in orange back to the DOT. We would maintain and own the property in the area shaded or shown in blue, and we would then allow them to continue to maintain and do what they do with the DOT right away.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on item 12 here? Counsel, any questions on this one?
Move approval, Sale.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Cole. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Next item is item 13, an ordinance of the, of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, repealing Sections 111.012 and 111.015 in Chapter 111. Alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinances of said city. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hi, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. The request before you tonight is to remove the sections related to the on-sale and off-sale waiting liquor license, or the liquor license waiting list. There are no more names on those lists, so those sections must be repealed due to an ordinance change in 2019.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public want to speak on item 13 here? Counsel, any questions for Jamie tonight?
Move approval.
Second call.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole to approve this one. Discussion here, counsel? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Item 14.
Item 14 is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 121, medical cannabis regulations. Sponsor is the mayor.
Jamie Palmer with Licensing, sorry about that. During the recent legislative session, there were several changes to the state laws related to medical cannabis. The proposed changes that are before you tonight mirror those changes and are required so that city ordinance does not conflict with state law. And in-depth presentation was given at the informational meeting and regular city council on June 7, and this, the presentation was available on the electronic agenda, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 14 tonight?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. Now, I understand that this has to be done to follow state law, but I was just thinking the other day after the election on Wednesday, last Wednesday, with Amendment C failing, thank God, that the rec marijuana people are, they're, they're at this again. And all this work that's been done by the city, the state, all the people running the dispensaries, I mean, I can't even fathom the amount of time and millions of dollars that were spent forming a law, forming a medical cannabis law that is probably going to be moot July 1 of next year. I'm thinking recreational is going to pass. Hopefully, the legislature and the governor's office have had time to grow a brain and let it go, especially if the citizens vote, voted twice to pass it. Now, what I'm saying is, let's, let's pretend that it passes in November, hope it does. That means all of this was for no reason, because all this is gone. There's only a few parts of it that will remain, you know, where dispensary can be, et cetera, et cetera. Hopefully, it's treated like alcohol is what, really how it should be treated. It'd be 21 to get it, and, you know, can't do it on premise. But it just seems crazy to me that, that someone got a wild hair and decided to take it to court and created all of this work for pages and pages and pages of rules that are all going to be gone next year at July 1. If we would have just let rec stand, we wouldn't be sitting here doing all this. And it's nothing on you guys. I mean, you're just following state law, blah, blah, blah. But it seems like we jumped through a lot of hoops for something that has been used thousands of years, thousands of years, including our founding fathers. They used to have pot parties, I don't know if you knew that. Made everything out of hemp. And I don't know why we fight it so much, you know? I've always get on the TV and I hear a certain person in peer tell us that we have all this freedom and liberty and all this great things going on in South Dakota, except when it comes to marijuana, or your right to choose, or, you know, any of those things. Then those, those are determined by somebody else. I appreciate all the work you guys put in to what you did. But just so you know, if it passes in November, this is all going to go in a wastebasket. And we can get marijuana whenever we want to. We don't have to have the sniffles or a sore back. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item? Come on up.
Good evening, sir.
Dennis Haugen, Sioux Falls. Kind of new here for the last two years. City's been run very well. State's been run very well. Anyway, as to the previous speaker, he evidently doesn't realize that there are three, three branches of government. If they didn't get their bill passed, they need to go to whoever helped them write it and learn how to write an amendment. The Supreme Court did what it was supposed to do. Whoever took it there is not an issue. What was done was done the right way. My only thing about marijuana is there a whole part of this issue that hasn't been studied, and that's the civil side of it. There are so many jobs, and I read so many articles, the dangerous jobs, where you're required to take a drug test. And these drug tests, these many drugs besides marijuana stays in your system for several days, or even months or weeks. And you find people losing high-paying jobs because they couldn't pass a drug test. That's the whole civil side of this. And we haven't studied that. So what impact is it of all the people out there that are capable of contributing in very constructive ways to the economy, but they're sitting on the sidelines because they couldn't pass the random drug test, which is often a civil side of the law, I guess, that hasn't been studied? So you don't know what the benefit is. And somewhere along the line, we will study that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight?
Bruce Danielson. I wasn't expecting to come up, but the last speaker made a statement that is totally absurd. If, if an employer has a set of rules that say, if we find any drugs in your system, you're terminated, that's all it takes. There isn't any additional laws necessary. South Dakota is an employment-at-will state, and if the hospital says you can't have marijuana, you can't take marijuana, we're going to do a drug test, you're out. If your church says, if you take any marijuana, we do a random drug test, you're out. That's the way it is. I, this is, we're stretching this story into an area that has nothing to do with what's being done up here. Yes, a lot of that's going to go away if, if rec is approved. But an employer in South Dakota, and employers across the nation, if you fly an airplane, you, and you have any drugs in your system, and you have any kind of a problem, if you survive the crash that you just had, you're done. You're never going to fly again, and you'll probably be in jail. That's the way it is. Those are our laws, and those aren't going to change. So what the last speaker was saying was bringing up a bunch of hokey stuff that has nothing to do with what you guys are having to do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, council, you have any questions for Jamie, who presented this item tonight?
Move approval, Nightzert.
Second, Cole.
All right, motion by Nightzert, seconded by Councilor Cole. Discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 15, please.
Item 15 is a first reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving a grant of permanent easement. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June 21, 2022. Private applicant is Northern State's Power Company.
Hey, Ryan.
I'll speak to this slide. It's Ryan Johnson again. The intent of this item is to grant a permanent easement to Northern State's Power Company, who also operates as Excel Power. The area shown in orange is a current easement that Excel has distribution lines in. The areas that are shown in yellow are proposed easements. To the north, there is actually Excel power poles in that area, so the goal would be to clean that area up and make sure that they have the appropriate easements. The line that runs east and west towards the south end of the city property is where Excel would put in future power poles and overhead distribution lines before heading south. City staff have reviewed the proposed locations and feel comfortable that it's not going to impede the future use of that land and are supportive of proceeding with the easements.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on item 15 here tonight? Counsel, any questions here? Look for a motion.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, McCurus.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by McCurus. Any discussion on that one? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 16 is a first reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations for Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation, $137,000. Mayor, we add that last sentence, and that $100,000 is a typo. The title of the ordinance and the attachments are all accurate. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June 21, 2022. Sponsor is the mayor.
Got it. Good afternoon, council, again. Don Kearney of Parks and Recreation. As we talked this afternoon, we have a proposed gifting agreement coming before you next week in the amount of $137,000 from the Sioux Falls Park Foundation. And so what this would do is provide $100,000 to our sales and use tax fund, so that, that, the community engagement process is considered a capital project. And so that'll go in the sales and use tax fund, and then the general fund will receive $37,000, and it just gives us suspended authority in order to move forward with those two proposals that we shared earlier today.
All right, thanks, Don. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this one tonight?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I spoke about this earlier at the informational. I just don't think we need another study. I think we know what we want for pools. I think we should just launch right into public meetings at the affected areas that need to have the pool replacement. And the, and I don't think we should be selling ourselves out. And I understand we're going to take out a bond. I don't know what number, you know, I've heard a few years ago, 25 million, I've heard 45 million, take out a bond to build all these pools next year. Well, we pay that mortgage, just like we pay the mortgage on the event center. Anybody should be determining what is, how these pools are built, or whatever amenities that are happening at the pools. I don't know how to swim, so I won't go to any of them. Might put my feet in. But the, the taxpayers should be determining. They're the one paying the mortgage on the, on the bonds, not the donors. The donors are given some money to put a pretty little sign up, and then they get to tell us what they want to do. That's what happened with the ice ribbon. Ice ribbon was not created from the city council. Ice ribbon was not the public coming forward and saying, we need an ice ribbon. I've never heard anybody in the public say, oh, we really need a refrigerated ice ribbon. It came from the donor. The donor came to the city and said, I'm going to give you the money. Thank you. This is what you're building with it. And I don't agree with that. I, I, I don't, I think it's great that people want to give to the city. I think it's wonderful, but that money should go into the general fund, and there shouldn't be any signage put up, or a little plaque, maybe. We can put up a little plaque or something. But we're even taking money, taking a donation to do a study. The city can't pony up $100,000, even though you shouldn't do the study. It just, it seems suspicious to me that we're having a community foundation with this other group, this, I don't know what that entity is, Sioux Falls, whatever thing they are, coming in and telling us what we're going to be doing with our money. That's, that's, you guys purse strings. Public should be the one putting public input on this. So you're going to vote for it because we need another study sitting on the shelf, next to the next, the other one, and the one from two years ago, and the one from two years ago, one from two years ago. I don't know how many studies we've done on pools. It's crazy. I think we've done more studies on pools than anything in this town. We probably did more extensive studies on pools than we did on Emerald Ashport. I mean, really. It, it reminds me of the discussion about the Homeless Task Force last week. Let's do something. We don't need any more studies.
Anybody else here to speak on this?
Bruce Danielson. The discussion of another study reminds me of the parking, the Walker Parking Study. You people that are new here probably don't know anything about the Walker Park, Parking Ramp Study. What that was is the city spent a lot of money, spent a lot of time having a consultant come in, the Walker Group, and to tell us where to put a parking ramp, and what kind of parking ramp we needed. They said we should put the parking ramp up on the north end, up by the Levitt, or else put it across from the Holiday Inn. The worst location that you could put a parking ramp is where the bunker ramp is right now. That was the one they said, do not put it there. It has the least number of logical reasons. This city council, this administration, the past administration, doesn't believe in following advice from the people they can't control. And Walker laid it out very well, what we needed for a parking ramp, and then we get the bunker ramp. That's only good for a ugly gray concrete wall for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, topic should, comments should be about the topic at hand, and this is about a Parks and Recreation gift. So does anyone else want to speak on this item? All right, council, any questions?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Cole.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Cole. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Baranko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 17 is a resolution authorizing an application for financial assistance, authorizing the execution and submittal of the application, and designating an authorized representative to certify and sign payment requests. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hello, Ryan Johnson. Hello, Ryan Johnson. Public Works team is requesting your support to apply for low-interest loan, funding application to support two drinking water projects that we have currently in our capital program. A little bit about the projects. First, maybe just tee up a little bit transmission water main. Those are the larger diameter water main pipes that convey water from our water treatment plant on North Minnesota Avenue and our Lewis and Clark connections on the west side of Sioux Falls. Those convey the water to our ground storage reservoirs and then our elevated towers before eventually making it out to the residential property, businesses, and industrial areas. Very important for reliability, very important for redundancy, and very important for just general operation. So, we go out well in front of all these transmission projects and really have a plan on how we're going to size and locate these things. Generally located in arterial street right-of-way, on a grid, and that's very common throughout the industry to do that, to again, provide that reliability and that redundancy that we really desire. So, this project's coming forward. It's located on Veterans Parkway, generally between Sixth Street and 26th Street. The goal is to connect those two pieces of existing transmission main, again, to shore up that reliability and functionality of that system. Goal is to install a 24-inch pipe that would connect, again, at Sixth Street. It would maintain on the west side of Veterans Parkway, between the right-of-way line and the paved surfacing, so we would have very little disruption to that paved area, very little disruption to the traffic movements there. Again, provides redundancy and reliability, and then provides a lot more flexibility within the system. Second project is our well 25 project, located generally south of I-90, just to the east side of the Big Sioux River, and the location shown there. There is an existing well there currently. It was constructed in the early 1950s, so it's pushing 70 years old. At the time, it was rated for about 2,000 gallons per minute of capacity. Just over the years, as silt and sediment starts getting into that sand and gravel pack, that capacity starts getting depleted with time. Currently, we're getting about 220 gallons per minute of capacity out of that, and, which is about 11% of the existing capacity. Certainly, just with its age, there's a lot more maintenance that's required with the pumping, the process piping, the mechanical and electrical systems. And so, engineers looked at options on rehabbing, replacement, and are recommending that we look at a different site, or a different well on that same location, or in close proximity to the existing location. Just researching it to feel like they can find better water-bearing soils that could produce a greater yield of about 3,000 to 5,000 gallons per minute. That's up from the original design of about 2,000 gallons per minute. Certainly newer equipment would then have less maintenance and operation costs from that standpoint. A little glimpse behind the scenes, as engineers are looking at this, they really try to profile what's underneath the ground to try to find a really solid location that has a site that can give us a really long viable asset for source water. So, this shows kind of the contour maps of the best places to put that, and they're continuing to cite that and locate that in a preferred location. A little bit about the loan. The two projects combined, engineering, construction, construction admin, et cetera, all in cost is $12.5 million estimated. Interest rate and term on the loan is 1.875 for 10 years. Provided we get support tonight, the next steps would be to submit the facility plan by July 1st. It goes through the DNR process. That takes several months. The next step would be, before we would approve any loans, we would come back to this group and ask for support to enter into a loan ordinance. After that time, we would try to bid that well 25 in the first quarter of 2023. The transmission main project, we would hold off till 2024, and we'd combine that with another project that's going to be done in that area. It's a pump station 240 Forest Main, very similar type construction, very similar type materials, and so we're hoping to really get the most value out of both those projects by combining them. And so, with that, I'd ask for your support and be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Anyone from the public here to speak on item seventeen?
You know, I was just thinking, all the money we were spending on this water rec plant, you know, that we should have built instead of the event center. Maybe, maybe we could do a donor sponsorship thing for the water rec. You know, we could put businesses' signs on the side of the pump stations. We could put signs up from where the water pipes are at, the big water pipes, that is sponsored by Acme Incorporated. We could probably save taxpayers a lot of money if we did that. Of course, the donors would want to tell us where the pipes needed to go.
Anyone else to speak on this item?
Melissa McCully. I just have a quick question. Does that actually include the previous well as well? Like, removing it, taking care of the land that it was on? That's just my question. Otherwise, yeah, I mean, it makes sense.
Ryan, you can, you can speak with her privately. Yeah. Any other public input on this? All right, council, do you have any questions for Ryan on this item?
Actually, Ryan, tell us how we're going to clean the area up. I think that was her question. Seems pretty simple.
Yeah, very straightforward. Typically, what happens is they'll take the top of that off and go at some point below grade, three to five feet, whatever the anticipated future use over the top of that area. Currently, there's not a lot in that area. It's floodway, floodplain. Backfill it, we'd clean it, pull out all the electrical, any mechanical equipment, that sort of thing, and then backfill it with gravel, cleaned-washed gravel.
Can you, questions?
Yes, if I could, Mr. Mayor. Can you back up to the slide where you showed Highway 11 between Sixth and 26th Street? One of the things you talked about was the capacity, yeah, that'll work, the capacity that it takes a 24-inch transmission line. Give me an idea. I've been trying in my head to, you know, over the last year and a half, of all the new single-family houses that we've approved in that area, and I lost track somewhere in that 1,000 to 1,200 range. So, but then there's also the commercial development that's going to be coming through that area. So, give me an, give me an idea where I lost track, between single-family homes, commercial, what we're projecting, and it's probably a better question for Director Ekoff and that group. But, how, how do we know that the 24-inch line gets us where we need to be, that, that we're good?
Sure. And maybe back to the, the global conversation on how we size, size these, and we, we have a third party that does this work for us. We've gone through the master plan for the wastewater treatment facility, which we identified our future growth areas. The next piece is going to be following is the water, source water, the water treatment, the water distribution. And so, under that water distribution umbrella is how we really thoughtfully lay out where these transmission lines will go. And so, they look at the uses, what the zoning is, what historic uses are, what our peak uses are during summertime uses, what our lowest uses are, and really try to provide an optimal pipe size that fits in that corridor. And you'll see some of the pipes are a little bit closer to each other, and they don't need to be as large, but when they get spaced out, the pipe starts getting larger, again, with redundancy and reliability all in mind.
Thank you. And it, it is, I just want to make sure that we're, we're sizing correctly because there's a lot of development in that area, whether, you know, the Sanford new facility that's at Madison Street, or just a little bit north of Madison in that area, just taking off so that it doesn't limit the amount of commercial development that we can do as well. So, that, that there would be adequate water, depending on what that is, and been able to see into that crystal ball of what we're looking for and where we're, we're headed with that part of it. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Ryan? All right, hearing none, look for a motion, please.
Move approval, second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion on the council here? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item eighteen is a resolution amending the 2022-2026 capital program to add funding to capital improvement program project number 14009, aquatic facilities improvements. Sponsor is the mayor.
Don?
Good afternoon again, council. Don Kearney with Parks and Recreation. This is just basically providing funding in our 2022 capital program. Currently, we have, we don't have funding, and so the funding that would come from the community foundation is a source of, of what would allow us to move forward with the community engagement process and that consultant contract. Glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Don. Anyone from the public want to speak on this item here? Counsel, you got any questions for Don here? All right, look for a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Second, Sale.
Okay, motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Item nineteen, please.
Item nineteen is a resolution recognizing June as Pride Month in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Sponsors, councilmembers Starr and Sale.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was approached by several constituents, see, I got that out, that asked me to bring this forward and really talk about what Pride Month is. And so, I, we use the same wording as is in the mayor's proclamation, are very similar, so there isn't anything new or unusual as part of that. And I'll leave the honors to someone in the group that wanted to read the proclamation, so.
All right, so we'll go, we'll go into public input, and you're up for, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Matt Newfeld, and I am the current president of Sioux Falls Pride. A resolution recognizing June as Pride Month in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, whereas in 2022, more than 11 million Americans openly identify as LGBTQ+, including over 30,000 South Dakotans. Whereas, June is designated International Gay Pride Month, honoring the history and achievements of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, two-spirit community, and all who identify as LGBTQIA+. Whereas, according to the Center for American Progress, a quarter of LGBTQ individuals still experience discrimination in some form every year. Whereas, more than a third of LGBTQ+ high school and college students continue to experience discrimination that negatively affects their ability to learn and to feel accepted. Whereas, the friends, family members, supporters, and members of the LGBTQ+ community know their own hopes, their own dreams, and their own voices cannot be silenced by hatred or bigotry. Whereas, Sioux Falls Pride here in Sioux Falls is mission-bound in bettering the lives and liberties of the LGBTQ+ residents and families of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and the surrounding area. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, that the city, the Sioux Falls City Council does hereby recognize June as Pride Month. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Matt. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. Good evening, Michael Stangland, Sioux Falls resident. Considering everything this resolution covers, how much public support do you think it has? When you consider the full wording of the resolution, the full extent of what it represents, how much do you think the public would actually be in favor of it? Because, I see a resolution that represents what the public is increasingly rejecting. By voting in favor of this resolution, you are voting against a rapidly growing tide of people who have had enough of what the pride movement has become and what it currently represents. Look at Florida, look at school board meetings across the country. The people have seen the modern pride movement for what it is, and the public does not consent. Look at the current polarization of the country. Do you seek a path that can actually unify people? Do you think this resolution will do anything to move towards unifying people, or will it merely feed the identity politics movement that continues to tear this country apart? Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, thanks, Michael. Anyone else here to speak on this item? Come on up.
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. Just for the record, this council used to do proclamations and resolutions almost every, every Tuesday meeting. There was always, I don't know why it disappeared, it disappeared. I haven't seen this for a long time. A bunch of people asked me, they're like, "Why did the counselors just, you know, Starr and Sale decide to do this?" I said, "Well, they used to do it all the time." But let's, so this isn't some unprecedented thing to put a resolution on the agenda to talk about Pride Month. We have, we have, we have all kinds of months. We have Cheeseburger Month, you know, whatever. I always tell people when it comes to things like gay rights, or pride, or being pro-choice or pro-life, you have your personal opinion about things, and you, as counselors, can have your personal opinions about things. You can personally feel that you don't like something. There's certain things that I don't like about abortion. But as a government body, you're taking yourself out of your personal beliefs, and you're sitting on the dais to serve everybody. Bill Clinton brought this forward in 1999. This has been around a long time. This isn't destroying the country. This isn't dividing the country. In fact, I believe that pride has actually united more people. There's been leaps and bounds made. I don't know if you've ever seen the movie Milk? It's a wonderful movie to watch about, about this. It baffles me that in 2022, we still have people who think that the sky is going to fall, and all these things are going to happen because we're giving a certain group of people some rights. As a, as a government body, you're not up here always to give your personal, you can tell, you can say something when you're off the dais about how you personally feel about homosexuality. I don't, I don't have a problem with that at all. But up here, all you're doing is recognizing something that's been national for over 20 years, and we always talk about in Sioux Falls, we're going to be diverse, we're going to have equality, we're going to have inclusiveness. We talk about it a lot, but not for the gays. How's, how does, how does that roll? I don't get it. You don't have to have gay friends. You, you may not approve of the lifestyle. But as a government body, you should just accept it and, and let it happen. I, I, I feel bad sometimes for how people make stuff up, in this incident in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. The, the hotbed of white power, by the way, if anybody has read anything about Coeur d'Alene. And how sad it is that people are protesting because two people of the same sex are in love with each other. Gay marriage is legal federally, folks. This, this isn't going away. You can protest all you want about how you don't approve of the lifestyle. They're not going anywhere. They're not, if you vote against this, they're still going to have their, the block party, they're still going to have their parades, they're still going to be marrying each other. All that stuff is going to stay the same. You're not stopping anything. And if you think you're going to come at them hard, you're just, it's, it's going to blow up in your face. The smartest thing that this council could do tonight, because I don't know what you're going to do, is to say nothing but vote yes. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Rachel. I live in the Southwest District of Sioux Falls. I wanted to thank Councilman Starr, and I'm so sorry, I didn't remember the other sponsor for bringing this.
Counselor Sale.
Um... Thank you, Mr. Sale, as well. Full disclosure, I do sit on the Sioux Falls Pride Board, and I have since two thousand nineteen, but I wanted to let you all know that we do, as an organization, serve over nine thousand people annually, and our festival reaches people statewide. So not only is this a piece of the One Sioux Falls Initiative, bringing everyone together, it is also a great financial boon to the city of Sioux Falls. We bring in many, many people statewide that come and participate in our vendor fair and bring in sales tax to the city of Sioux Falls, along with being something that saves lives. Pride saves lives is something that is said frequently in online communities and things like that, and frankly, in a state like ours where we see statewide legislation that is affecting transgender people and other LGBT people, having something that celebrates people as who they are and who they want to be and being themselves is essential, and part of our community having recognition from our city that we want to support, and we want to support all of the city, the people that live in the city, especially our LGBTQ+ community and two-spirit individuals. So I would ask you all to please vote yes on this resolution. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rachel. Come on up, sir.
I'm David Zokitis, and I was out talking to people six months, maybe a year ago, and there were a couple of kind of nervous people off to the side, and one of them came up to me and said, I've been sent to ask you, what do you think about LGBT, you know, the alphabet people? And I said, they're people. And, you know, that's all there is to it. They're just people. That's it. And, you know, accepting, calm, peaceful, they're people. No need to make a big deal about, we're all just people doing the best we can.
All right, thanks. Anyone else here to speak on this? Good evening.
Sarah Bruce, Sioux Falls. So we're not going to like what I'm going to say, and I really don't care, because as a transgender person, the LGBT people, we have been fighting for years. The gays and the lesbians is not on our side whatsoever. We had that murder that happened with a transgender. Where was the LGBT people on her when she got murdered in a domestic situation? I know how council's going to vote tonight. I know that if you vote no on it, that you're not a bigot. I know personally that each and every single one of you, because I know you personally, is not against the LGBT community. If the LGBT community would know y'all personally on a personal level, they would understand. I know that Mayor Tenhaken, because I've been in his office behind closed doors, knows that he is not transphobia and homophobia. I know that Mayor Tenhaken has signed proclamations for four years, but it's not good enough. We know that just because Mayor Tenhaken doesn't do a proclamation and reads it for pride doesn't mean that he's against LGBTQ people. He has a family, he wants to go to his Father's Day, that's his ordeal here. But I'm going to tell you something here, and I don't care who likes it or not, we had Mayor Uther that was against LGBT, and he sat there like a Kardashian and fake and read it. And boy, but when he read it, you could tell he didn't want to be there, but he wanted to do it as a show, and I really don't want nobody doing a proclamation that was fake and phony, didn't want to be there because he was out of his comfort zone. And after he read the proclamation, he ran with his penis between his legs because he didn't want to be there. I don't care what the LGBT people say, I'm a transgender myself. What we need to do is we need to be a family, and the LGBT needs to come together instead of fighting against the transgenders because we're out in the world ourselves, we don't have support from the LGBT, the gays and the lesbians, we don't. Do I need support from them? No. I don't. This is drama. The proclamation that he signed, the mayor, was good enough to put it in to place here. It's disheartening, and I don't care because I hear stuff in the background, I really don't care. We need to rebuild our community up. We need to get the lesbians and the gays and everybody together as a family and stop playing tug-of-war, especially the transgenders, this has been divided for years and years to come, and it will always be, because the gays and the lesbians do not support us whatsoever. This has been going on for decades. And now I want to go to gay pride, and I have nothing to do with the lesbians and the gays in this community until we can come to an agreement for the transgender community here. I want these gays and these lesbians to reach out to Mayor Tenhaken on a personal level. Y'all don't know him. I want you to have these gays and lesbians reach out personally to some of you on a personal level that might be bisexual, we don't know, that might have family that's an LGBTQ, that might have friends that are LGBTQ, that might have children. If we pass a resolution, then we should be passing all resolutions for everything. Do you know how crammed up this is going to be here every Tuesday night? So if you vote no on it, I know, as a transgender biracial person, it's out of my mouth, I don't care what the other people say, I know personally that you're not against LGBTQ people. I know personally that Mayor Tenhaken is not transphobia or homophobia, I know that. This is ridiculous. So I am appalled, and I say vote no on this, and please, if you do vote no or yes on this, please give your explanation, and if they want to take it the wrong way, go ahead and let them take it the wrong way. I know for a fact that Tenhaken is heterosexual, that Tenhaken is going to support the LGBT community.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight?
Bruce Danielson. Words have meanings, words have consequences, words can hurt, and words can destroy. The mayor dude made a presentation in his new press room on Monday, June thirteenth, to tell us how he's planning to operate his reins of mayoral power. Instead of reining in the bravado and getting down to actual leading and governing, he's decided to, or chosen to, footstomp on anyone or anything in his way. Does this thing work anymore?
I'm sorry, Bruce.
Which way? Everyone has their version of, he has decided or chosen to footstomp on anyone or anything in his way. Everyone has their version of stomp, and how they choose to use the word, but his reference to it is scary authoritarianism. You know the word stomp, but do you know the current accepted usage of it? There are several definitions from respected sources about today's use of the word stomp and foot stomping. Wiki says stomp is a downward strike with the heel of the foot from stand-up position, and is usually directed at the head or body of a downed opponent. The Columbia Guide to Standard American English, a stomp began as a variation of stamp, but that's now standard preferring, preferred to the meaning to trample or destroyed by trampling. The American Heritage Book of English Usage says, "We can use stamp or stomp interchangeably to mean to trample or to tread on violently." I draw your attention to the Urban Dictionary. Foot stomp is a sissy, unfair move used in the sport of ultimate fighting. This move can hurt the opponent's foot tremendously and will limit their mobility for the entire match. A fighter who uses this move may be considered a bova, ass, or dick. Words have meanings, words have consequences, words can hurt, words can destroy. Another way to look at the foot stomping bova of modern culture is where the person is in extreme disappointment to one's friend, a person afraid to make plans outside of their own space due to irrational fear. So you have a bova willing to make unfair moves to hurt their opponents based on an irrational fear. Words have meanings, words have consequences, words can hurt, words can destroy. What's your fear? We are citizens of Sioux Falls who have been foot stomped by holier-than-thou attitudes using words to pass on messages to their followers to build fear. Words have meanings, words have consequences, words can hurt, words can destroy. What's the fear? In the news of the last few days, we found out South Dakotans went to Idaho to use more than words to silence. They went to destroy, to foot stomp, to create fear. In Washington, DC, we saw how words can do to create a frenzy of uncontrolled destruction, destruction that could be, could have destroyed our constitution, our very nation, leaving people in fear. The results of two thousand sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two elections are showing how the flagrant misuse of words can damage our cherished rights and privileges of American citizens. Where is the leadership nationally? Where is it in this room? Were the leaders in this room willing to mend the wounds caused by words and actions? Foot stomp? How would you like to be foot stomped in your home, church, place of work, being put down or thrown out because of something natural to you even you don't understand? The resolution before you today may seem like an empty gesture to some, but ask the members of your family who have been foot stomped because of something you didn't know or really didn't understand or didn't even care to know. Pass this resolution, it is the right thing to do. Pass this resolution as a gesture to healing. While you're at it, what harm can come from passing resolutions for Black history, Norwegian heritage, or just pride of place and time? Quit foot stomping. Quit foot stomping your neighbors, your friends, your family members. Pass this resolution because it's the right thing to do.
Okay, anyone else here to speak on this tonight? Mike, and then Mike. We'll go with this Mike first. Good evening, Mike.
Mike Zerito, Sioux Falls, I'd just like to say, I think should vote no on this resolution. I think the mayor, I think the mayor just doing the proclamation is enough as a statement as a whole city that I think we're showing our, that we're honoring their, honoring these people. I just don't, I just think, just kind of like the mask mandate, I think this resolution just kind of, just kind of just dividing people. I think as we're seeing tonight, the passion, I mean, you're just basically telling the whole town that they have to do something some people don't want to do. And I think the mayor had, the mayor says through his proclamation, he's basically speaking for the whole community. I think, so I would encourage you to vote no on the resolution and support the mayor, support the mayor in his proclamation.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Another Mike.
Hello, Michael Haskett. I live in Del Rapids, but I own a restaurant in downtown. And congratulations to all of you who are recently elected or reelected, so I do have faith in all of you guys. I wanted to come and talk to you guys about something that is very important to me. I grew up in Sioux City. I'm not from Sioux Falls originally, but I did go to high school here, and I graduated from Washington High School in nineteen ninety-eight, and I do just want to put a picture of a young man that was murdered the year that I graduated from high school, Matthew Shepard in Wyoming. I'm sure you all know the story. Growing up in Sioux City in the eighties, you know, there was a lot of, not just homophobic, but heterosexual language that was used towards me, and I used it as well. So I think that voting for a resolution that designates June as Pride Month is a good thing to do, to show that we support everyone in our community. In ninety-three, I moved to Sioux Falls, and again, I graduated in nineteen ninety-eight, but I've gone to cooking school in New York, I've worked at restaurants in Seattle and Colorado and in Minnesota, and along that way, I have met beautiful people of all stripes. And one of my mentors is Marie Annette Cologne. She is a queer woman from Minneapolis, her family's from Puerto Rico, and she is my mentor, and she is awesome. And I think that one way to really honor the work of everyone in our community is to recognize Pride Month. I wanted to end with this for you guys. I am also a dad. I'm a cisgendered, hetero, white man, business owner in Sioux Falls. I employ trans people, I employ people with color, I promote women to positions of leadership in my organization. I view, I see the value in everyone, and even the folks who walk on the street that may not see the value in themselves, but I think most importantly is I'm a dad and a good husband to my wife, and my ten-year-old and my six-year-old with autism, they're both beautiful people, and I don't care what they grow up to be, I am going to be proud of them. And I think part of pride is being able to say that you are a cisgendered man that believes that the LGBTQ community needs to have their moment to shine, not just for them, but for us as heterosexual individuals in this community, that we can see past heterosexism, see past homophobia, and honor the people in our community that bring us beauty and art and hard work and membership and community in our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Hello, Melissa McCollie, Sioux Falls. I just wanted to come up here and say a few words about the LGBTQ+ community in regards to what we're doing and as a community. All we are asking is to give them recognition. We're not asking for anything else. We're not requesting any additional things. I know a lot of you, I've met a lot of you personally, I've talked to you, I know where you guys lie with some of the issues. What it comes down to is, a previous person had said that maybe this isn't bringing people together. I think it's quite the opposite. From the city of Sioux Falls to the surrounding areas, it does draw people in, it does bring people together, and we celebrate a community that actually has had and overcame many things. It's not asking for, what we've talked about earlier, plaques or anything like that. It is simply saying, let's celebrate this community. Let's hold them up, let's bring them together, and let's try to heal some of what has happened in the past. And I love Sioux Falls, and you guys all love Sioux Falls, and I know that in the heart of hearts that you guys want the best for all citizens in the state, in the city. And unfortunately, I know you're going to be out of town for Pride, so you were unable to attend, but that inclusivity that you've talked about during your campaign, during all of the campaigns, is a necessity, and I think this would be a great way to start that out with a new term. So, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thanks, Melissa. Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? Go on once, all right. We will put a motion on the floor, then we can move into discussion, counsel. I would move to approve the resolution.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Starr, seconded by Counsel Sale. Discussion on this item. Counsel Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Starr and Counselor Sale for bringing forth this resolution. I will be voting against the resolution today, not based on the merit, but because I do not believe it is the role of this governing body to determine who we publicly support, acknowledge, and provide statements of support for any social group or event. As was mentioned previously, there are countless months and days that we celebrate, and from my standpoint, and those include like Asian American and Pacific Islander Month, or Women's Month, or Suicide Awareness, or Mental Health Awareness, and I just, I don't think that we can- And I just, I, I don't think that we can acknowledge the significance of every single social group and event. And I believe that the mayor's proclamation that he has already signed is sufficient. And there were two previous resolutions that were passed, one was in March of 2018 and January 2020, that talked about how we in Sioux Falls establish and maintain and welcome inclusive community, foster respect of all persons regardless of race, religion, creed, gender identification, and sexual orientation. And so I just don't believe that this is a precedent that the council should establish, and after much consideration, I will be voting against it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCurris.
Yeah, I have absolutely no objections to Sioux Falls Pride, Pride Month, Pride Festival, and Pride Parade. I believe it's the role of us to make sure that each of those can go on safely and assemble and celebrate life and celebrate together, and so happy that that can happen in our community. I believe the best pathway forward is to continue the precedent that has been the last couple of years where the mayor has been offering proclamations. So I'm in agreement with Counselor Cole that we should continue the precedent of mayoral proclamations. Last year, there was over 75 mayoral proclamations that were offered, and I believe that worked very well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe for the public's sake, I don't know if maybe the city attorney could comment on this or not, just to clear up for people, because we've talked about resolutions and proclamations, maybe just a quick definition. What is each one, and what's the difference? And if we've already had a proclamation and we're doing this, is it the same, or just maybe a quick little Webster's deal for the folks out there that have been hearing these two terms a lot?
Thank you. Legal significance, there really isn't a significant difference between the two. One obviously requires a vote of the, of this body, and is, is an action taken by this body, others, as the name would suggest, a proclamation by the mayor alone, so, but whether there's been a proclamation before, resolution this time, legally significant, there's no legal significance between the two.
Both just basically recognize whatever the...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion, counsel here? Counselor Nightzert?
I won't repeat what has been said. I, I've been pretty consistent over six years that I don't, I don't support statement resolutions, I just think that getting, going down this road puts us in a tough position because of what we don't recognize could be seen as just as important as what we don't or what we do recognize. This is obviously, you know, this is really passionate for them, you've got good people here, th- this means a lot to them, I mean, they, they live it, they get that. But that being said, I, I just think about all of the other things going on, even right now. You know, you, you literally are on the cusp of maybe by the end of July, abortion may be illegal in the state of South Dakota. So I, I would think many people may think that it might be morally imperative that we either make, take a stand on whether we believe that there is, a woman has a right to choose, and that it's, it's violating her human rights, or if it's a wonderful thing, whichever. I, I just think we, we shouldn't just be wading into every single issue, we should do what we can, you know, as far as, and Sierra made reference to it, you know, treat everybody with love and respect, which we all do. But I, I just think going down this road just opens up a can of worms that, that we don't want to get into, so, thanks.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Other discussion, counsel, on this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Nightzert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
No.
All right, that's going to pass, five to three. Move on to item 20, please.
Item 20 is a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to the Southeastern Council of Governments, CCOG, Board of Directors, Urbanized Development Commission, UDC, and Sioux Empire Leadership Council, sponsors council members Sale and Jensen. The resolution reads as, for the CCOG board, appointed for a term to expire May 31st, 2023, council members Kurt Sale and Pat Starr with Jim David as an alternate. For UDC with appointed for a term to expire May 31st, 2023, council members David Baranko, Rich McCurris, Greg Nightzert, Pat Starr with David Bixler and Jim David as alternates. For the Sioux Empire Leadership Council, for a term to expire May 21st, 2024, council members David Baranko with council member Greg Nightzert as an alternate.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak to this item? You guys want to speak to it? No. Okay. Speaks for itself. Anyone from the public want to speak on this? All right, counselors, let's get a motion on the floor on it.
Approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion then, counsel here? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass, eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 21 is a notice to transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated May 31st, 2022.
All right, thank you, counsel. We have any new business to cover tonight? All right, we'll move on to public input for tonight. Public input is three minutes per person, and on items we didn't cover earlier in the evening, so. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Novy, I'm a 50-year resident of South Dakota and a forty, forty-eight-and-a-half year resident of Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls. I did have the privilege of being mayor of this community from 1974 to 1984, commonly called the golden years. Oh, good, I got a laugh here, didn't do so well at the school board last night. I'm here on a serious subject matter, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not going to yell at you, I'm not going to scream, no accusations, no criticisms, so relax, it'll be okay. No criticism for me. However, the subject matter is serious. You are on the front line. When a bullet starts and stops flying, you and your people will be the ones responding and then cleaning up the carnage. An attack on a school your children or grandchildren attend, the mall or superstore you visit, your church, an outdoor concert, a senior center, your business, a hospital, a courthouse, even this meeting space is no longer unthinkable. A June 3rd article in USA Today by Ryan Miller does a good job describing the crisis. I hope you will read it. A book called The Violence Project goes into depth about the individual murderers. It puts forth ideas on how to fix this crisis. The authors were on Facebook, excuse me, on Face the Nation Sunday, I suggest you access it. Going to age 21 to purchase in, in, a weapon in the house bill is progress, however, to me, it's not good enough. Follow the science, the human brain is not fully developed until the age of 25. Impulse control is the part that's not fully developed. Think about that. Ask your friendly local psychologist or psychiatrist if you want, or Google brain development. Like you, if I'm spending time thinking about what I can do to make a difference, because we all want to make a difference, that's why I'm here tonight. We're not helpless, we have the power to speak up and to act responsibly to make change. I realize the decisions on gun laws happen further up the political food chain, but since all politics is local, we should start here. First of all, I'm not anti-gun, I'm here because I want to save lives. I put together a plan, there are 12 parts to it, plus some commentary, I'm leaving each of you a copy. I'm not expecting you to do anything today except promise me that you'll read it, and at a future public meeting soon, I hope you'll discuss the parts that you support and add your own ideas. Further, I hope you will adopt a resolution outlining the specific points you support, and then send them to the legislature, the governor, and our congressional representatives, asking them to act on your and therefore our behalf to protect our lives and increase gun safety. The two men arrested, two of the 31 men arrested in Idaho were Sioux Falls residents, think about that. Gun violence has gone up in Sioux Falls, we are not immune, we've been lucky so far. It's not a matter of if, a mass murder will be attempted here, it's when. As local elected officials in the largest county, city, and school district in the state...
Thank you, Mayor.
...you are our leaders. I'm hoping you will rise to the occasion...
Thank you, Rick.
...and take action. Godspeed.
Thank you.
I was at five minutes when I came in here, and I edited the best I could.
I know, he did, he did all right.
Thank you, I'll leave copies of my thing with, with Mr. Greco.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public input tonight, come on up.
Greetings, I'm David Zalkitis, and tonight's discourse is on practical governance. We've got three new council members, and I'd like to give you some help getting going. I, I've watched a few city council meetings, and I understand what's going on, so maybe I can help you understand it yourselves. If you really want to understand government, you got to follow the money. Hate to say it, but that's the way it really works. But the best-funded candidate usually wins. Sorry, that's just life. And news media helps people with money get elected, and nothing else seems to matter very much. Sioux Falls has a strong mayor form of government, which comes down to, mayor has a lot of control, directs things, and, and pretty much everybody else just kind of goes along. Getting elected, you know, a lot of people aren't there, don't even bother voting, and the people that do vote, vote too much on fluff, not what we really want, but that's what we got. There seem to be three factions in city council. There's a few progressives, there's a few, a few more really pro-establishment people, and, but everybody else just kind of goes with the flow, and that's what you see in human nature in general. Typically, the loudest minority wins. Again, general human nature, not what we want, we'd rather have more careful thoughts, but you know, loudest minority wins. So if you want to pass some really progressive policy, I think here's the way to do it. You should like, talk to your peers before the council meeting to try to circumvent some of those dynamics I mentioned earlier, and build support, and then when you come to the meeting, it'd be a lot, a lot smoother going for you. We all need to be aware of pretense in government, sometimes people say one thing and mean something else entirely. In particular, I'd be cautious about citizens advisory boards because they like to approve way too much. I always have some recommendations, knowledge is power, we should pursue the greater good, try to make the world a better place, that kind of thing. And we should all try to enjoy nature's beauty. I was at Lake Alvin about a week ago, and here's a shot I took after I landed my canoe and looked at the beautiful sky. So with that, everybody, you have a good evening, and good government, too.
All right, anyone else for public input tonight?
Dennis Hagen, Sioux Falls, some, some of you that ran for this job probably are thinking twice. They tend to use you as a punching bag or something. But I, I just want to make a few points, and there are powers from outside the state, outside the city, that want to destroy any level of democratic government they can, from the state to the county to the city. And I'm just going to say one word on this, trust accounts and 501Cs are tools, in some cases, and used in some cases, to promote terrorism. You gather the money, put it in a trust account, the trust account has a purpose, the purpose goes way beyond your life or my life, and then it sells the destruction later, and it's on a test run. I was very happy when the mayor recognized some suspicious out-of-city money, 40,000 or 50,000, whatever, and you recognize it, that's the important thing, just recognizing, can't do anything about it, it's not, just recognize, study those campaign things, try to figure out where the person's coming from, or the party. Everybody should read 2,000 Mules, Few 2,000 Mules. This, see, organized crime was involved, and this is my opinion, in our recent election. Now, when you have organized crime, you have millionaires and billionaires investing money to take even more control. It involves thousands of people, hundreds of people, and it's extremely difficult, it's labor-intensive then to investigate it, and to really go in and find out what happened. That's why you see the FBI sometimes, who go after big organized crime operation, it sometimes takes them 10 to 20 years before they get it figured out. I saw this video, 2,000 Mules, by, at the theater here in town, along with probably 600 other people, because the theater was full on those first two showings, and I haven't met, I haven't met a person yet that doesn't think, pretty close to think what I'm saying to you, is there was crime involved, and big crime. And then there are those people who just poo-poo it, but in order to poo-poo it, you better spend some time denying all of those videos and pictures of people and whatnot. If somebody poo-poos it, just because they looked at it for 10 minutes, they probably didn't study it very deeply. We had a right to be suspicious.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else here for public input tonight?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. By the way, that movie was debunked the day it came out, massively debunked. Anyway, I wanted to talk a little bit about leadership, building a team. Heard this all through the campaign, the election, coming up that, you know, Sioux Falls, we were building a team for the first four years. Now, I always say, if you're going to run for office, you got to prepare to be ready for that job on day one, or at least in a couple of months. So I'm trying to figure out what team was being built, and I don't have all the people, but I'm going to try to get through what I know. So over the last four years, two fire chiefs quit, police chief quit, health director quit, planning director quit, IT tech director quit, housing director quit, deputy chief of staff quit, a top chief engineer for the city quit, and that's the only ones I remember. Now, if you're building a team, I always thought you build a team and they stay, and they help you build things. The fact of the matter is, if you're running for mayor, you better be damn ready to be ready to be mayor on day one, not four years down the road for your second term. Sorry. There's a learning period, I'm sure, six months, a year? Four years to build a team? A team that all quit? And I see ads for a lot of these positions, it never been, oh, cultural officer that we needed so badly, she quit too. Somebody asked me the best way to explain Sioux Falls city government to them, recently. I said, it's easy, rudderless ship, cruise control. Ain't nothing, what else going on, really? You guys debated a resolution, something councils have passed for over a decade. It wasn't controversial? Supporting equality for people? That's controversial? That's all of a sudden controversial? This isn't Pierre, this is Sioux Falls. The one thing I love about Sioux Falls is that it's a little progressive, because when you walk out the, out of the, out of the borders of this town, boy, you see all kinds of crazy stuff. And we can't, we, we had a three to five vote, but whatever. And then one more thing, when we're up here, this is our time, and we will speak about what we want to speak about. It's called prior restraint. Nobody can tell us what to say, as long as we're addressing this, about government and this body. And I'm tired of it, and you need to knock it off.
Anyone else to see evening? Come on up.
Sarah Bressard. It was controversial, so I'm going to tell you how it was controversial. So behind closed doors, in administration, somebody made somebody mind, so somebody wants to do a resolution, and then the LGBT wasn't satisfied because Ted Hicken... the LGBT wasn't satisfied because Ted Hicken didn't come up and breastfeed them and read a proclamation, because they thought that he would be, that he was a closet bisexual or against LGBT people here. And, and I have a council member looking at me like this, but I know what happened behind the scenes. So then we wanted to do a resolution because the LGBT community, that wasn't good enough for them, for proclamation. So moving forward, then we needed to do a proclamation for everything now, okay? Because I'm going to hold you to it. I'll put the brakes on the police and everybody else. I'll put the brakes on city council. I want every resolution passed then, okay? That's how we're going to roll. This is how we're going to do it. Ted Hicken, who said, we don't know, I, I, I'm not even going to mention, because I know so much, that people were forced out, people were forced to resign, people left because they didn't like to change us. So I'm going to tell you inside, internally, that I know, and I'm not going to mention no names. People has left those departments, has been there for years, that did not do their job, that were lazy, that did, were, were getting paychecks on city taxpayers' money, that has been riding the system for years, and that had no accountability for years. So those people are gone. Those people were pushed into retirement or otherwise quit and moved on to other things. I'm not going to mention the names. So Ted Hicken's administration has been cleaning up the house, and I, I shouldn't have to get into details of internal stuff. But my godly, there was people that's been in that city government that's been writing our taxpayers' dollars and wasn't doing what they supposed to have been doing, and having a vacation for twenty and thirty years. And it was time that they needed to go do something else. We have a good government here. Not everybody's going to agree with everything and everybody, but that's how government rolls. Not everybody is going to have their cake and, and eat it too here. This is why we got government. Republicans, Democrats, people that sees different views and different things. The mayor, again, is not against LGBTQ. The mayor will keep doing the proclamations, and the mayor will keep doing family stuff with his father.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight? Alright, seeing none. Take a motion to adjourn us out? Anyone?
Jensen.
Second call.
Alright, motion by Jensen, seconded by Cole. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
opposed? Alright, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.